And happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, February the 27th and it's 2024 and it's shortly after the 10:00 AM hour. We're calling our meeting to order this morning. And this morning, we want to start off with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by none other than our very own Director of the Emergency Management Agency, Director Dan Morgan. Good morning, Director.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Thank you for your overwhelming grace and love. Please hear our pleas for the world. Where there is strife and pain, send your calming power. Where there is war and conflict, send your peace. Where there is misunderstanding and hate, send your love. Be ever-present in our thoughts as we work for the betterment of our world and our community. We ask these things in your name. Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director. We're gonna keep it moving this morning. Next up, we have special recognitions. The 2024 Showtime Pro Debutantes are here, and I'm gonna yield to Commissioner Washington. Commissioner?
I am elated to present the 2024 Showtime Debutantes. You know, I was a debutante. I'm not gonna tell you what year. But it was one of the greatest things that I've ever done. It taught etiquette. It taught, it gave a sense of self-confidence, a sense of elegance, just an overall understanding. We did promos at the radio station in Bibb County, so that was making back in the, I can't, I'm not gonna tell you, but that was a big, big deal for us. So I hope that the ladies of the, of this debutante cohort got the experience that I did because it was something that you would treasure for the rest of your life. And I know that the proprietor of the debutantes puts her heart, soul, and everything into it because she wanted to bring something special to Rockdale County for our young ladies to be presented to society and have a good experience. So I hope you treasured it. I hope you took a lot of pictures because that's one thing that I don't have at this time is a lot of pictures of it. But I actually, my best friend from high school who I'm still good friends with, I mean, she's my, still my best friend, and I went through it together, so that's something that we cherish. As a matter of fact, we didn't have like the dress, dressmakers that you all have. Like, we had, my grandmother made my debutante dress and my best friend's debutante dress. So that is something I still have, are the dresses, because they were handmade by my grandmother. So am I, do we have some?
We, we do have a wonderful video, and I think Public Relations is on standby. They're waiting on your cue to tell them to roll the video.
We're on cue. That, that did it. You know, they, they don't do it on my snap. They do it on the chairman's snap. That's what happens, like.
Let's watch this video. We're so proud of these young ladies.
Yes.
Let's give these beautiful ladies another round of applause. Absolutely. I tell you, Ms. Mims does a fantastic job with all of the support staff of the people who are working a part of Showtime Pros. Rockdale County could never be so proud to have an organization like Showtime Pros coming out of Rockdale. It is so important that we teach, train in the area of academic excellence, in the area of etiquette, and social skill development. Teaching our young people how to be prepared, how to plan, and how to prioritize for the days ahead. I'm honored to be here, and I am super excited and ever so proud of the young people that continue to tell the media that we are doing positive things in our community. Yes. And Commissioner Washington is the poor frog that wouldn't praise its own pond. Let's give Executive Director Mims a wonderful round of applause. Absolutely. Executive Director, we're on a short time limit this morning, but I'm gonna ask you to come up real quickly and give us a brief about these beautiful and smart, intelligent, bold young ladies that are part of Showtime Pros.
So I understand we're on a tight timeframe, but I do have a couple that would like to say a few things. Is that okay?
We're gonna make it happen.
Thank you. Which one of you ladies would like to say something?
I see Taylor, where's Taylor?
Very brief because we're on a tight timeframe.
Yes, we are on a schedule. Good morning, everyone. My name is Leila Allen. I am a senior at Newton High School, but I grew up in Congress and Rockdale County. And this was actually my first time being a debutante. I think you only get one time.
You get one time.
I can say that this experience definitely helped me grow as a woman, as a young lady, and I will cherish these moments that Ms. Mims and my future debut, well, my debutante sisters gave me. So it was a great eight months, and I definitely see and feel like a new person. So I wanna say thank you to Ms. Mims and thank you to my sisters.
Good morning. My name is Sydney Snipes. I'm a senior at Heritage High School, and I truly love this experience. When I was sitting at the ball, I was just sad because I was like, wow, it's already over. And the sisterhood that I built with all these young ladies is just, is something I'll never forget. So I thank Ms. Mims for everything that she's done for us. And yeah, I can't wait for my daughter to be a debutante.
That's planned ahead, yeah.
Good evening, good morning. My name is Taylor Levitt. This experience has taught me the importance of sisterhood, etiquette, and how to carry myself as a young, respected young lady. I wanna thank Ms. Melissa and Ms. Tanya. What I would take from this is no matter what path you choose in life, always do the, always do your best, and that's what I've gotten for it. And no matter what, you always have your sisters, and that's how I truly feel from leaving this program. And I wanna say thank you guys for having us out here this morning and representing us because it did take a lot of hard work from Ms. Melissa. A lot of get-on times and all that, but it worked out in the end, and it was really a beautiful program, so I wanna say thank you.
We, we, let's give them a round of applause. Absolutely. Absolutely.
I just want all the debutantes to please stand, though. You're here, please be present.
Thank you so much because a program like this takes community support, and so I'm so thankful for all of you all's support. You read the welcome reception. I remember Commissioner Williams saying, oh, they seem so shy. So they're a little bit more bold now. I appreciate all of the community stakeholders that spoke into their lives, so just thank you for the support for the program.
Commissioners, any last comments to Executive Director Mims and our debutantes?
Thank you, Director Mims. This is your second one, but it's definitely something that is talked about in the community. The young ladies aspire to be a part of this, and you've done an excellent job. They look so good. They are beaming, sitting here, and I'm so proud of them. And especially Ms. Levitt, I've known her for a very long time, so to see her especially get up and speak and just be one of our assets, this is, this is great. I love it. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Well, I remember that welcome meeting, and I did think, oh, my gosh, they're all so shy. This is not the same group of girls, of young women, that I am seeing today. They, they are accomplished, they're ready to move on to the next phase of their life. If they're seniors, they're going on to college or to whatever, and you can just sense that they're ready for that. So thank you for your work with them.
And Director Mims, as we wrap up, I do wanna say congratulations to you and your team. As you've heard me say on multiple occasions, no one gets anything done by themselves. You have an excellent staff, but also want to recognize the parents. Let's give all the parents a round of applause as well. I think it's always important to remind our young people that it's the parents who's supporting them, and when you have supporting parents to help push you forward, that is very, very important to highlight the efforts and oftentimes the sacrifices that the parents make. And then the last thing, having a program like this here in Rockdale County, and I understand that this program encompasses all of the eastern I-20 corridor, which includes Lathonya, Conyers, Covington, and all of the eastern region of the I-20 corridor. But to have it here in our region for young people to really teach etiquette, academic excellence, and all of the things that they're teaching about going into womanhood. I had a chance to talk with him, and I talked to him about being Top Chef and remembering that they are Top Chef and acting and walking like they're Top Chef. And on this past Saturday night in Atlanta, Georgia, at their event, I mean, it was a class act from A through Z. You're making us proud. Give them another round of applause.
Mr. Chairman, one last announcement. For the last two years, we've presented young ladies to society, and their escorts were an integral part of this. And so the gentlemen have been asking for a while, why aren't we being presented? So next year, we're, we're opening the application to bowls as well, so it'd be bowls and debutantes.
Oh, we're, we're super excited about that. Absolutely. Absolutely. We have so many wonderful men in leadership that work for Rockdale County, and I'm sure they'll be more than willing to lend a hand to encourage our youth, particularly our young men in our community. That's great, great news because it's important that not only that we leave positive impressions for our young ladies, but certainly our young men in our community is just as important. So to all of our male directors, get ready, get ready, get ready. They're gonna be calling on us so that we can influence the lives of our young men in Rockdale County and our surrounding area. Again, let's give them all a round of applause. All right, Commissioner, you, you, I'm pushing forward, but you got a little bit something else you wanna say.
We don't recruit, but I'm gonna put this right here. That's it.
Oh, you just did a little plug?
Just a, you know, a little plug.
Okay. Executive Director Rudge, I'm moving forward with the agenda. We're now at item number four, the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is item number five, approval of the minutes from January 23rd, 2024, and February 20th of 2024. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. There's no unfinished business. Item number six, we're moving right on to item number seven, which is our consent agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
So I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as they're listed.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're rocking and rolling, ladies. All right, that brings us now down to item number eight, the regular agenda. Executive Director Rudge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 113 is rezoning case 2023-01. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning zero southeast Salem Road from SRC-NC Salem Road Corridor Neighborhood Commercial District to SRC-MXD Salem Road Corridor Mixed Use Development District. To impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances, and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading this morning.
So before I make the motion, I, I'm voting against this. So if one of you all, if you all are voting for it, it might be easier to do it in the affirmative, and then I vote against it.
Commissioner Williams, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to hear why. Um, I, they, um, I know we got the, 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 um, um, email and the discussion on the thing, the criteria that we're supposed to set out to deny ordinance. And while I appreciate that, I don't believe that another gas station, as nice as it's gonna be, is what is needed for the Salem Road Corridor. They've talked about the mixed-use element, and they're agreeing to put a mixed-use element, but what, if you have housing over a gas station, is that the kind of mixed use that we are really looking for, for the Salem Road Corridor? I, I, I understand that, listen, they're getting, we're getting ready to do a lot with Salem Road, and it's an opportunity to make a whole lot of money. But I get, we, we have so many other needs in this county, and we have so many gas stations. I wish that they had come to us and worked with us. We might have been able to do something that, that would have even incentivized what we wanted there. And the reality is, once we start allowing things to come that isn't what we want or what's in our vision for the future, we lock up that land and we can't move in the way that we want to for the, in the future. It's just my opinion that we have enough gas stations, we have enough, like I said, we have enough gas stations in this county. If I'm the queen of riding on fumes, if I can get from one gas station to the next in Rockdale County, then everybody else in this county should be able to. Also, I just believe that there are most more things that we can do with that property. And like I said, we're in the progressive economic development business. We could have talked to these owners and done something that maybe would have truly incentivized a mixed-use development and gotten us what we needed for that prime piece of real estate in this county.
Commissioner Williams?
So, um, my thought is, aside from the gas station, the other two buildings are office buildings with loft residential above it. You know, this is right off of the I-20 Interstate. I, I didn't see a problem with the gas station. So.
Okay, well, I've heard from both of you. We've gotta make a decision, so Commissioner Williams, what is your pleasure?
So, um, I would move to approve the second read and to adopt the ordinance as presented.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
Nay.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Washington is opposing it. Motion carries. Next item, please.
All right. Item 114 is a resolution of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners to accept the withdrawal of rezoning case 2023-10 without prejudice and to waive the 12-month prohibition on subsequent amendment applications on the subject site.
So I move to approve this resolution as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 114, 115 is a future land use map amendment case 2024-01. An ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's comprehensive plan as amended for property located at 2463 and 2453 Northwest Lake Rockaway from the medium-density residential future land use category to the commercial future land use category. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and to refer this ordinance to the planning commission as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 116 is rezoning case 2024-04. An ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2463 and 2453 Northwest Lake Rockaway from R1 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial. To impose conditions upon the property, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a first reading.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the planning commission.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 121 is a resolution of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners to accept the withdrawal of future land use case 2023-04 and the rezoning case 2023-15 without prejudice and to waive the 12-month prohibition on subsequent amendment applications on the subject site.
I move to approve this resolution as presented. I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, okay.
So we're down to public comment. I have not received any public comment cards.
Any public comments, cards? One, once, twice? All right, we're moving right on into board comment. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Washington. Commissioner?
Yes, so first, once again, I would like to congratulate our debutantes, and thank you for coming, and you all got to see a snippet of what we do. And, and this was an easy day, so you had to come back when there's fireworks. The, um, the second thing, I promised two Black History, um, facts. Last week, we talked about the Divine Nine, but I wanted to introduce or talk about to those who may not know. The Sigma Pi Phi Organization, also known as the Bulee, was founded in 1904, and it is the oldest fraternity for African-Americans among those named with Greek letters. The fraternity does not have collegiate chapters and is designed for professionals at their mid-career or older. Sigma Pi Pi was founded in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania in 1904. Bulee is called the Council of Chi, of Chiefs. Significant members of the Bulee are W.B. DuBois, Carter G. Woodson, Charles Drew, Weldon Johnson, Douglas Wilder, Martin Luther King Jr., Charles Rangel, Andrew Young, James Clyburn, John Lewis, Elijah Cummings, Tom Bradley. Let's see, those are just a few. But, oh, Hill Harper, that, that might be the only name that you all might have had. Y'all, you don't know who Hill Harper? You, but you know the other names, that's what you're saying. Okay. Hill Harper, um, anyway, the Bulee, Bulee is truly a secret society. They do things in the community, and nobody knows. They're not out promoting what they're doing. They're not out, you don't know when they're meeting. I tell people that it's actually one of the most distinguished, you have to be asked to, to join, truly asked to join. You, you don't know anything about what the Bulee is doing, and it's considered a high honor to be asked to be in the Bulee. So, um, that, I wanted to, to talk about the Bulee. It's my first Black History Month. And then my second one is Sarah Blair was born into slavery on Christmas Day, 1855, on the Blair Plantation near Greensboro, North Carolina. After the Civil War, Sarah lived with an aunt in Knoxville, Tennessee, and changed her name to Gammon, the aunt's name. In 1870, Knoxville Judge John Murphy was appointed to a judicial point, post in Virginia, and Sarah was offered free transportation to Montana in exchange for caring for the Murphy children. She accepted, and her family moved in Virginia City, Montana in 1871. Gonna move down. Anyway, um, she was widowed two times, and in 1900, at the age of, in 1900, she was widowed for the second time. She had four children, and her husband left her some resources. So eventually, she took those resources and invested in the Virginia City Water Company. And long story short, she started buying up land that had springs on them. Eventually, she ended up, in 1917, she purchased the, um, a portion of her water company, the last portion of her water company, and she was the sole owner of, at that point, she became the only African-American woman in the United States to own a utility company. And she continued to manage the Virginia City Water Company until she died of a heart attack in 1931 at the age of 76. So that was impactful to me because for so long, we never think of us owning water companies, owning utility companies, and that's a great, that's a great way to, to accumulate wealth when you own something that everybody has to have, like water, electricity, cable, things like that, ladies. Okay, so I wanted to bring that as my second Black History fact for today. My next thing is, we are having a Economic Development Town Hall sponsored by Cretezy, the Conyers-Rockdale Economic Development Council. That will be on March 23rd at JP Carr Community. That will be on March 23rd at JP Carr Community Center at 6 o'clock. We will be talking about all things economic development and what we're doing with Cretezy, trying to get the word out to the general public. And starting in April, my, I don't know how many annual, but I am doing my spring golf clinic. That's something you, you like, Mar, I'm sorry, it's March 25th for the, that's Andre again, thank you, Andre. Um, it's the, the Economic Development Town Hall is March 25th, but the golf clinic starts April, it's April 1st, 7th, 14th and 20, no, 7th, 14th and 21st for the golf clinic in April. Um, we are having it at, uh, Sugar Creek Golf and Tennis Pro, I mean Golf and Tennis Co, Club in, off of Boulder Crest Road. It is from 3:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon on those Sundays and it's a clinic, it does cost $200, but it's $200 that is well worth it when you start playing golf and loving the game. That's all I have.
Commissioner Williams?
So you were talking about the fraternity and then you made a reference to your sorority. So, um, my initiation is this Saturday into my Alpha Delta Kappa Sorority as, that is a sorority for teachers.
Oh, wow.
And retired teachers, so.
So do y'all have colors and calls and do y'all step or stroll?
No.
I'm just asking.
The colors are purple, purple and gold.
Oh, okay.
But, um, no, we just do service projects.
I was looking for a stroll.
So last week Restoration Storehouse had a luncheon, recognizing many of the people in the community who have contributed to them financially as well as their time and their, and their talents. Um, it was renewing hope and restoring communities, which was, um, it was really, really nice to see many of those community members gathered together for a nice little lunch and, um, to, to remember, it made me remember why we decided in the first place to lease the building to Restoration Storehouse. They are doing such good work. They've built out about half of it already. Um, there's resources there for people who need resources. And it looks like I only have one sweater because I have.
Jasmine says that makes you look like a cartoon character.
Just realized that, okay. Um, then last week also Judge Ten had her law camp for youth that she does, she's done it every year except during COVID, um, during that, that winter break week in February. And so I was a panelist on the, uh, talking about Law Making 101, Skills That Make the Bills. And, uh, the other person on the panel was Judge Tammy Wells Thomas from Newton County. So we talked about, um, how local government is really important, what ordinances are, what resolutions are, and how to become a public servant. And, um, again, it was just another group of really engaged, attentive teenagers, listening to all the information, asking good questions and learning about the law profession and about what happens in making laws. So, um, that was good. Captain Dennis Pass, um, had his retirement, uh, Friday, which, you know, when something like that happens, you, you kind of start to reflect back. He was one of the first people I met, um, after I became a commissioner. When I first heard about the stepping up initiative in February or March of that first year, 2015, I talked to, um, the CEO of Viewpoint Health and they organized a trip out to San Antonio to see the complex and the work that they were doing out there. Dennis went along on that trip. So way from the very beginning, he supported everything we were doing with, um, the stepping up initiative. He was, he has been key for, um, getting our pe, excuse me, our peers into the jail to work with, um, the inmates and getting them up, letting them know of opportunities that they have and helping them to think about what it will take to, to change their life. He, all, every time I've needed data for anything, Dennis could provide it and pretty quickly too. So, um, we will miss him in the county sheriff's office, but I have appreciated this long, um, working relationship with him.
Let's give Captain Pass a round of applause. Thank you, Commissioner.
Couple more things. Um, the Alzheimer's Association is having a first responder training on February 28th, which is this Wednesday, at the retreat, the retreat at Conyers over on Sigmund Road. I'm hoping to be able to go to that. Um, I think, you know, there's so much we need to know. There's, um, the ti, one of the times that my husband was hospitalized a couple months ago, um, one of the men in the room, um, was having an issue with dementia. And, you know, it, so it was interesting to kind of talk with him to, um, the nurse was asking him, you know, where he lived and, and I happened to have noticed the place he was trying to remember as, as I was driving into the complex, you know, so I could prompt him on where it wa, yes, that's it, he said. Um, you know, this is a difficult time. And so I'm looking forward to learning. That's what I'll be doing is learning. Um, the last thing is my Black History Month fact. And, um, I was, I'm going to talk about B.B. Moore Campbell. Anybody ever heard of her?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay. She was an American author, journalist, teacher, and a mental health advocate who founded, um, NAMI Inglewood. Inglewood is a, a community, a city in California, Southern California. Um, she worked specifically on mental health needs of the Black community and other underrepresented communities. So this NAMI, uh, chapter that she, um, founded was in a predominantly Black neighborhood. She wanted to create a space that was safe for Black people to talk about mental health concerns. Through her, throughout her time as an advocate, Campbell made her way to DC and on June 2nd, 2008, Congress formally recognized B.B. Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month to bring awareness to the unique struggles that underrepresented groups face regarding mental illness in the United States. So I wish I had known that a few years ago when I was doing my community conversations on mental health because that, that I didn't know that until Deidre sent that to me last night. Um, and I just thought that was really interesting that this, that long ago, which, you know, 20 years or more ago, someone was already interested in advocating for mental health, for wellness, for, and, and looking specifically to the Black community and where there's, there have been barriers to overcome. I learned that as I worked to organize those community conversations um, with some of the members of the committee who were, who were Black and could share with me some of their experiences of people not wanting to talk about it. But I'm always, I'm always up for a conversation on mental health and mental wellness. And, um, I, it's been in the news a lot and I think it, I really appreciate B.B. Moore Campbell and the work that she did.
Well, certainly thank you for sharing that with us, Commissioner, both commissioners. Commissioner Washington, have you had any thought provoking since Commissioner Williams?
Of course, always. I just wanted to commend Judge Ten for her law camp. Um, I've, I've been a part of them every year and I, I can honestly say that this one was probably one of the better ones, um, except for the one where I was the keynote speaker. That was the best one. This might be second, but, um.
No, it wasn't because I was the panel, on the panel.
Well, I was on a panel too this year, so.
Just a different one.
Just a different one. So I was, I get, I was on Saturday, I mean, um, Friday's panel and it was just a great, first of all, this is the first year it was two days. And then, um, she actually held court. Um, and the children got to see her in action and all of the questions from, because there was actually a lady who was, uh, six months pregnant who was incarcerated and all of the questions that come from the, all of the things you have to take into consideration when you're going through the legal system that way. So it was just a great law camp and I wanted to commend her for doing another excellent job and then taking the vision and always expanding it. That's, that was key also. So that's it.
All right, very good. Um, we're trying to continue to mon, monitor our time before I get into my comments. I'm going to do a couple of things off script and then I'm going to call up a couple of the directors to give us a very, 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 very brief update on some of the activities happening in the county. One of the things off script this morning, I want to talk about the two individuals who are behind the scenes in Rockdale County. Uh, our Commissioner Post One, Commissioner Washington has a constituent liaison and that is Mr. Andre Thomas. Mr. Thomas, stand up. Y'all give him a round of applause. This is the person. Andre Thomas serves Commissioner Washington behind the scenes, making sure that she's on point in places. He's doing the research and data to make sure that he is forging ahead her initiatives within her office as the office of the Commissioner Post One. The second one is none other than Ms. Deidre Goldton. Stand up, Deidre, give her a round of applause. Deidre serves as the constituent liaison for, uh, Commissioner Williams in Post Two. Deidre travels with Commissioner Williams. She makes sure that she is where she needs to be on time. She does lots of research, as you've already heard, Commissioner Williams just referenced Deidre. But I wanted to mention this because I'm often talking about the fact that no one gets anything done by themselves. There's almost always someone behind the scenes making sure that the people out front are getting the job done and they're looking good. So I, I want to make sure that when we have super talented technicians, professionals who are propping up the Board of Commissioners behind the scene, it is important that we recognize them. Once again, with the board, two of y'all, please stand. Let's give them another round of applause. Absolutely, absolutely. This is one of the initiatives that came out of the BLC a couple of years ago, uh, that as the county continues to grow with all of the activity, making sure that we can address the needs of over 96,000 residents in Rockdale County, having over, uh, a thousand employees. Uh, you cannot do the work without having people that can support you and having the right qualified, competent talent to be able to make sure we're pushing Rockdale forward. I just wanted to make sure I highlighted them. We appreciate the support that you're giving Commissioner Washington as well as Commissioner Williams, which ultimately supports the entire Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much to both Mr. Thomas and Ms. Goldton. Now I want to move over just a little bit. I want to start very briefly. Uh, and I'm going to start with him because he's kind of long-winded like I am, but I'll start with Director Simkins. Come on up. He's our Stormwater Management Director. He's in charge of Stormwater Management in Rockdale County. As he makes his way to the podium, let me just give you a brief education. There wasn't a Stormwater Department in Rockdale County. There was only a Stormwater Division, uh, 2017 and beyond backwards. Uh, in 2017, this administration, uh, created the Stormwater Management Department. Now what were we doing about Stormwater prior to 2017? I'm glad you asked. In 2017, it was a division, a division tucked underneath the Planning and Development Department. We brought it to life, gave it some love, love means provided some funding and some resources. Absolutely, so they can get out in the county and do the things. But Director, tell us what's happening. Uh, give us a brief update of some of the hottest topics in Stormwater Management in Rockdale right there.
Um, one of the hottest topics in Stormwater Management in Rockdale County uh, is some of the upcoming work, some of the current and upcoming work that we have going in the Sunrise Lake Rockaway community. Um, that has been a community that, um, in, in their opinion, has been, been underserved, uh, long underserved, but as the chairman has alluded to, without funding, you're severely handicapped in services. Citizens want services, but in order to provide these services, it takes funding. And, and that not only goes for my department, but multiple departments in the county. But now, off my soapbox, back to Sunrise. There have been two major arteries that have been affected recently by stormwater runoff and just some of the rain events that we've had in recent months in Rockdale County. Uh, as a result, we've responded to, to these locations. We have done our due diligence in regards to hydrology studies, basin studies, in regards to just inspections of the infrastructure in these areas. We have a game plan that will be starting the beginning of April, 2024. We will be addressing both issues on both arterials into the Sunrise community.
Very good.
Um, we have not been overlooked. One thing about solutions is you have to be prepared when you're going to address an issue. You don't just run out blindly, throw pipe in the ground. You always want numbers to back up what your plan of action is. The current stormwater system out there conveys a one-to-five-year storm event, which are storm events that we have on a regular basis. We will be upgrading this stormwater infrastructure in this area to convey 10- to 25-year storm events. That, I don't want to get too far out into the weeds in regards to the exact plan of action, but we will be just basically replacing the older corrugated metal pipes that the chairman has talked about recently with reinforced concrete pipes. For those who don't know, corrugated metal pipes typically have a lifespan of 25 years. We all know that the pipes out there have been in way longer than 25 years. Replacing them with these, um, reinforced concrete pipes will extend this lifespan to over 100 years, which the chairman would like me to say this, but we'll all be long gone by the time we need to, uh, address those pipes out here again.
Speak for yourself. Speak for yourself.
So, so the cake version, we are on it. Um, Director Mims, it's been a great asset in us communicating with the, the citizens out there and, uh, we're full steam ahead. Uh, if you need intricate details of this project, feel free to reach out to the Stormwater Department, myself included, and I can give you all the details you need.
Thank you, Director Simkins, and thank you to the Stormwater Management Department. The entire department is doing a fantastic job making its way around and across Rockdale County. Uh, stormwater, infrastructure improvements and upgrades is one of the hottest topics in Rockdale County that this board has already been addressing. I'm shifting a little bit now. Now we've done a new thing, commissioners, as you know, over in our Department of Transportation. Our Director, Brian Kelly, has been, uh, reassigned to focus primarily on all of our corporate and strategic projects coming out of the Transportation Department. And now he has, he has a laser focus where he can really make sure that those projects, i.e., such as the Courtesy Parkway, the completion of Sigmund Road, and all of the major, uh, transportation projects in and around Rockdale County. On loan from the Rockdale Water Resources is Deputy Director Jamison, who is backing up and supporting Director Kelly with boots on the ground and making sure that we're deploying our troops throughout Rockdale County when it comes to day-to-day operations with Rockdale Department of Transportation. Deputy Director Jamison, come on up and tell us, you've got some crews out there this morning, uh, and I think you're also in the same area that Director Simkins was referencing.
That's all right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners, everyone here. I am excited because you're exactly right. Um, RWR has been out there before, but also Stormwater and RDOT and our CIT team actually went out there this morning again. out there this morning again. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure in this community is that we want to make sure the community stays looking well, right? And so our CIT team is out there currently, help picking up trash and the like. What our RDOT team is doing, they've already started filling potholes. Over the last several weeks, we've already started filling potholes in the area, and so we are staying on top of all of that. One of the things that I'm going to ask our citizens to help us out with, because this is very, very crucial, and I'm going to slow down my cadence just a little bit to ensure everyone hears me. Please, sir, please, ma'am, if you're watching, please be cautious. We have many of you who are ignoring the barricades and the barriers that we have placed up right there at Lake Rockaway, and you're using your four-by-four and your ATVs, and you are ignoring the signs for your own safety. Please work with us, and do not get on the roads that we have closed off for your safety. So if you have any questions, please reach out to our RDOT department. You can reach me directly. I don't mind giving out my county cellphone. And we will ensure that whatever we can do to assist, we're asking you that if you see something, say something, because we are trying to ensure that there's nothing that gets in the way of the permanent fix in that area to ensure those residents get exactly what they deserve, and that's our absolute best.
Deputy Director Jamison, I really appreciate this quick, brief update and report, but more importantly, you put an emphasis on the hazard and the liability, and you talked about folks ignoring the barriers and the barricades. They're there for a reason. They're there to keep you safe, and if you disregard one and go beyond a barrier or a barricade that we have, then you're, you're living life at your own risk and a whole, at a whole new level by going beyond a sign or a barricade that is orange or yellow that tells you to stay out or keep out, or keeps you away from hazardous or any type of harm. Let me just say this in that, in that same vein. Thank you again, Director. Thank you so much.
Can I add one more thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of the other things we want to ensure that we asked you to do is that a lot of the barriers we are putting up, some people are having fun with them, and they're throwing them into the lake. Please, ma'am, please, sir, again, we've put county materials out there, and they're having fun with it, and they're throwing them into the lake. That's one of, that's one of the things we also want to ask that you don't do, because that was the state waters, and we want to ensure that you're not taking things that are meant to actually help us, and you're getting rid of them in the lake. So that's, we saw a few floating down, or one floating down the lake, and then we saw a few actually in the ditch. We've put them back up, but we need our citizens' participation and support in that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you describe it as them having fun. I don't see anything fun about it. They're actually, they're actually violating the law, that's criminal damage to property, and a whole list of other things with government asset and resources. I mean, we have to pay using taxpayers' dollars to use those warning devices to keep people out of harm's way. So I don't see anything funny about that at all with folks out there pitching the material and the, the equipment and resources that we have to use to keep people safe. Again, thank you so much, Director. I did want to make mention to, oftentimes, I hear from law enforcement as well as the fire department, people, they don't give any due regard to a blue light or red light. They show enough don't give due regard to a yellow amber light. We have crews working in the field all over Rockdale County, our utility crews. These are people, husbands, wives, and brothers and sisters. They're working, they're in the middle of the road. When you see a yellow light, a blue light, a red light, slow down. Slow down. Move over. Get into the other lane. We have crews out there doing work and trying to make sure they get the water restored as quickly as possible. No, I don't want to go to any one of our employees' houses and say to their family that someone has been run over by a speeding motorist or perhaps a distracted motorist who's on his or her cell phone, and they did not see our person who's decked out with a yellow vest on, flashing yellow lights. People are not paying attention. I take this very, very seriously. We're talking about our employees, and we're talking about their safety and their livelihoods. So I want to encourage citizens who are listening and watching this broadcast, please, ma'am, please, sir, slow down, put your cellphones down. I do want to remind you, there's a Georgia law that says that we are a hands-free state, so you're not supposed to be driving with your cellphone. That's, that's a little bit there. I wanted to make mention to that one. I want to move forward now, as I continue to monitor the time. I want to talk about a few things that are happening, coming up here in Rockdale County. I'm not sure if they have a flyer ready, PR has a flyer ready for this one or not, but the State of the County address is coming up on March the 28th, Thursday, March 28th. It will be a State of the County address like you've never seen before in days in the past. It will be right next door at 903 Main Street here in the Rockdale Auditorium in the heart of Old Town Conyers. We want to make sure you are there. Doors open at 8:00 a.m. The program will start at 9:00 a.m. here in Rock, the State of the County of Rockdale County. We want you to be at the State of the County address, and we're asking that you come. Please come early. We are anticipating a large crowd that particular morning, but we're, exciting news about the work that Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Williams, and this board has been doing over the last 12 months here in Rockdale County, and we're going to be talking about where we're going as a community. In that same vein, I also want you to make note, if you're taking notes, take note of this one as well. Also, we're super excited about the Government Judicial Complex grand opening, a groundbreaking ceremony, should I say, groundbreaking ceremony. When? It's going to be April the 19th, April 19th. Make sure you make note of that. The government judicial, let me just tell you, in meeting with the team to plan for this ceremony, Commissioners, we are reaching way back, and we are saluting the history and the heritage of Rockdale County. Judges, clerks of courts, sheriffs, leaders in this community who have played a very intricate part of being a part of the pioneers and the pathfinders and the trailblazers of Rockdale County. We will not be turning dirt without paying respect to those folks who got us to where we are today, as we unveil what the future will look like in and for Rockdale County. So that's April the 19th. You don't want to miss this. It's going to be a very big event. It's going to be a ceremony. It's not going to be your typical groundbreaking, just hard hats and shovels. We're going to have a true ceremony, and we're going to pay respect and homage to those people who've paved the way in Rockdale County. So I'm excited about that one as well. Another good bit of excitement, I think I've already announced, but let me say this, at this morning meeting, fresh, hot off the press from the Atlanta Regional Commission. As you know, Rockdale County is one of the metro counties that make up the Atlanta Regional Commission, the metro Atlanta area. Our median household income, stay with me, our median household income had been for the last 15-plus years a measly $66,000. According to the Atlanta Regional Commission, we're now up to $73,000 in terms of the median household income. That's something to clap about. That's a big deal in Rockdale County. We're trending and moving in the right direction in the area of economic development. We are now attracting, we are attracting more younger professionals and retired professionals who are coming out to this region, because number one, I say this all the time, as the chairman of Rockdale County, it allows me to kind of boast a little bit with my colleagues throughout the region, Commissioners, that we are the safest county in the metropolitan Atlanta area. Let me tell you why. Every now and then, something happens in Rockdale County. Every now and then, we make the news, but we're not that county. Night after night after night, news story after news story after news story that you see on the local news. And I want to give hats off to our sheriff, Eric Levitt, our chief of police for the City of Conyers, Chief Scott Freeman. I want to give hats off to our fire chief, Chief Marion McDaniel, our EMA 911 Director Dan Morgan, and all the folks over at 911 who keep our community collectively safe, collectively safe. We may, we always have room for improvement in so many areas of our county, but we can talk about economic development, we can talk about our local schools, we can talk about infrastructure improvements and upgrades, but we can't have anything if we don't have first, a safe community. The fact that our median household income has tremendously improved from 60, I don't know whether people really, you gotta, you gotta really understand, that's a big deal. From $66,000 as an average, up to $73,000 as an average in the region, that says a lot about how we're tracking and trending here in Rockdale County. So there's a lot to be excited about. As I wrap my piece up here, I do want to go to my Black History tribute this morning. I, I'm such an old-schooler when it comes to, and there are so many wonderful people and historians in the African-American culture who've done so many things to contribute to the forward progress of this country as a whole and to this planet all the way around, not just limited to the United States. So it's so hard. It's often difficult to try to pick one person and just to talk about and highlight. So I'm gonna go back to my classic self. I'm going back to none other than the queen of soul, Ms. Aretha Franklin. I've got two songs that I want you to make note of.
Are you singing?
I'm not going to sing them. I'm not going to sing them, but if you catch them in my backyard near the fire pit, I'll be blasting them and singing along. But I want you to write and take a note of these two songs, because I don't think these are two that, that jump right out at you when you think about Aretha Franklin, the queen of soul. So she wrote a song many, many years ago, in fact, I think this was the late 60s and the very early 70s. The song titled is "Never Gonna Break My Faith." Now, if you remember what we just experienced through the Black Lives Matter, the pandemic, and all of the transition from 2019 up until where we are now, 2024, this song is relative so much today. But I want you to go check it out. There's a video that goes along with the song, and you will see how it makes sense in terms of where we are today in the United States. Aretha Franklin, "Never Gonna Break My Faith." You want to make sure you make note of that and go check it out. The second one by her, it sounds like a brand-new release, and I've been sharing this one with a lot of folks on it. Really, it is, it's, you know, it makes me think that, did Aretha just release, did they just blow the dust off of this one, and was it somewhere in the archives and they just released it? And it has such an updated sound, even the young people will appreciate it. And it's simply titled "Wonderful" by Aretha Franklin. Go check it out. Aretha Franklin, if you understand the history of Ms. Franklin and how she resonated as a church girl. Her daddy was pastor, renowned pastor, Reverend C.L. Franklin, and Aretha had a start in the local black church there in Detroit. And they came up, my understanding, from Memphis and Mississippi, and later landed in the city of Detroit, Michigan. But her legacy and how she was a part of the fabric of our country in so many different ways, there's so many people I could have chosen to talk about, but this morning I wanted to talk about none other than the greatest, Aretha Franklin, the queen of soul, of soul music. Check out those songs, "Never Gonna Break My Faith" and "Wonderful." Both of those tracks are very, very powerful pieces by her. We have so many wonderful things that are happening in our community here in Rockdale County. I'm super excited about the progress that we're making. Again, I'm so grateful, Commissioners, of the talented crew of employees in all of our departments who are doing some fantastic and phenomenal work to make sure that we're moving our county forward. Next time we come to this, for the BLC meeting, I will be calling up Director Redmond as he begins to talk about what's happening with the upcoming Parks and Recreational Season and some of the changes that he's making, but all of the activities that we can look forward to for the spring and the summer months as we move throughout 2024. This calendar year is loaded with activities and events. You're gonna have to stay tuned. Go to our website, and by the way, we do have a website. In addition to that, I have to say it that way, because folks say, "How did I find out this? How did I find?" We have a website. In addition to that, we're on every social media platform you can be on. Absolutely. So we want to encourage you to do that. Executive Director Relish, is there any need or reason for executive session this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming out. This meeting is adjourned.